All right, well, the time is now 7:30. I'd like to call this regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Yes, trustee DeRoni. Here. Trustee Humphreys.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton. Here. President Kramer.
Here. I'd now like to welcome our visitors. They'll be in opportunity to speak later. Thank you for your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four, the approval of last month's minutes. Did anybody have any questions or comments about last month's minutes? Did anybody blink and miss it? Short meeting because that's been four, I think. I have none. I'm in favor of that suggestion. Last month's meeting? Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion has been approved. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
We are doing great, looking at an excellent year end. This is the time of year that we start to look at year-end spending and whether we can get in some additional projects and some other things that the management team is looking for. Things are right on track. I did want to bring your attention to one thing on the invoices of note. The "I promote you" invoice that is listed as just shirts for the monitors and maintenance staff. That was also the giveaway bags for bookology, as well as the shirts for our maintenance and security staff. So, that was not a single-shot invoice. Also, that ServiceMaster invoice for mold remediation, that was the wall between the staff lounge restroom and tech services where we did have that leak that needed some renovations. I'll open that. Going swimmingly.
I had two, I guess, maybe just second questions. I may have been just misreading this. On the expenditures by object report, the capital replacement fund, it says that we have an expenditure of $31,624. So, I think that portion is referencing the current expenditure. And then if you look at, let's see here, the invoice headed listing for the capital replacement, it looks like it's $3,184.20.
Right. The expenditure by object report actually references the previous month, what we approved last month.
Oh, I got it.
So, it has all of the Alara bills and the solid product.
And the reason, the numbers were so close, but just sort of one decimal.
Yes, the one decimal long really got it in.
It did.
Yeah. And last month, we paid the first installment to Alara on the 2019 project.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, maybe this second point will be similar. The payrolls that look like, let's see. It looked like we had... Do you have the full sheet?
Oh, yes, I think your payroll total is off.
Yeah, this is what I was referring to. I think payroll is for September of 2018.
Yeah, that's not right.
Yeah.
Good catch. That was just a mistake out there.
Yeah, that didn't quite go. That was leftover, I think, from...
Just a formula.
Yeah. When you look...
So, what should that number be? Maybe we'll just edit that as part of our, as part of the approval of the financial matters.
Do you have this? I have it, but I need your...
Those were my only two points. If anybody else had any comments or questions. We have a motion to approve our financial matters as presented, subject to the change in total September payroll is to $199,684.12. All right, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented with the modification that I referenced that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you please provide the roll call?
Trustee Humphreys? Yes, trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton? Yes. President Kramer?
Yes. Thank you very much. The financial matters, subject to the modification, have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number six, which is public comment on agenda items. Do you have any public comment on agenda items? Thank you very much. Any public comment on other library business? Joni?
Joni Henson, the Downers girlfriends of the library.
Please come to the kitchen desk.
I just wanted to announce that we're going to start our book sale, which is our big fundraiser of the year. We start setting up tomorrow and goes through the weekend. So, I hope all of you will stop by and pick up a couple of books to put up on the shelf or when the door is this high and have something to read. But, yes, just to, so you know what's going on, each other, thank you.
And this is Joni. She'll be right here.
Right here, in this room.
In this room.
Okay, and you don't have to wait for snow to be this high. I hope we don't.
Hopefully, don't have to.
I'll come borrow your book.
Okay, thank you very much, Joni. We're now on to agenda item number eight, new business personnel policy.
All right, and just so you are all aware, the library's attorney currently has this draft as it stands, but they will not be able to get that vetted and back to us in time for the November 14th meeting. So, that final approval will push into December. So, there is plenty of time for your comments and questions and to gather feedback on this. As I stated in the cover, there are three major changes. One is to the vacation, to actually split out vacation by part-time IMRF-qualified staff, those working 20 hours a week or more, and part-time non-IMRF staff, those working 19 hours or less on an average basis per week. My recommendation will be that if we make this change, that that actually take effect January 1st, because we do give our approvals in annual allotments on January 1st. It just makes sense to have it take effect at that point and going forward. No one would lose anything in their leave, in their leave bank. Speaking of leave banks, the sick leave bank was something that was put into the policy a number of years ago and really hasn't been used in my tenure here. There has never been anything in that sick leave bank.
What exactly is the sick leave?
Okay, so, it's a way for employees to donate sick leave into a bank, and then they have this whole complicated policy about how people could request and get leave from that bank if they were in need.
So, this is the leave sharing?
Yes, it's the leave sharing sale.
Always wants to share your sick leave.
Well, here's the thing. If you retire from here, you can convert your sick leave to additional IMRF service time. That's what most people do. Most people are, most of our staff who are getting sick time of an amount that might be shareable are looking to save that and use it toward their retirement and convert that to additional time with Illinois Municipal Retirement.
Okay.
And they can, you can convert up to one year of service. That's 240 sick days, takes, to get home.
How many sick days do they contribute?
Twelve, twelve per year, and it's prorated. So, if you're a part-time person and you're working an average of 20 hours per week, then your sick day would be four hours. Prorated day. And so, that, it just doesn't, that policy just doesn't seem to be working for us. And then under the general leaves of absence, extending that type of leave to up to 12 weeks to kind of mirror FMLA, and also rolling back the amount of time people are moving here to six months because babies happen to our staff. And we have actually made that provision in the past for someone to take, for a part-time staff member to actually be able to take an maternity leave and return to us under the general leave policy. So, that's really what we're looking to accommodate in that, in that section. The final format, all the numbering, all the margins, all the, you know, making sure all the periods are where they're supposed to be, will all happen in the final draft. That's Caitlin's bailiwick, is to make sure that, you know, all our numbering is correct and our margins line up pretty.
Do the vacations accrue kind of the same way as the sick leave?
Vacations have a different cap. For vacation time, you can only take a, you can only carry from year to year one week.
Okay.
So, and it's a prorated week, so for our part-time folks, it's whatever their week is, or full-time staff, it's the 37.5.
So, for the people to take vacation, right?
Yes. Yes, and we do encourage our staff to take their vacation time. We don't like it when people lose hours because they have no choice to take it.
So, I have a question in section 3.1. It was talking about employees at will.
Yes.
Unless there's a signed agreement with the board of trustees, what would that situation?
That would be if the board chooses to do a contract for their director or assistant director or, some boards do choose to do that, generally only for the executive level.
Now, this is going to be bad because I wasn't involved in your on-board meeting. Or, do you have a contract?
I do not have a contract. At my former library, I did have a multi-year contract by the end.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And if you choose to go that way, you can write things in, like, amount of time should someone choose to leave.
I think Dave was the only person on the board at the time that you were on-board, which was only two and a half years ago at this point. That's true.
That is, that is true. That is true.
I guess it's true. But, I think there were times since I've been on the board where we did have a contract with the, with the director. I think usually it was at the request of the head of the unit that we did it once that I can remember, not routinely. Routinely, it seemed to be necessary and even appropriate.
When do you see 50/50, or?
At this point, I'm not going anywhere.
No, I'm sorry. Across other libraries?
It really depends. It's very much, you see it more here in the Chicago suburbs than you do down in the downstate in smaller libraries. And generally, when those contracts happen, they do tend to be multi-year, and it's usually an effort to try to get a director to commit to staying very frequently through some sort of large project, be it a construction project or referendum or some kind.
Well, I also think if somebody's moving, like, so somebody has to move the job that maybe they want.
The protection of a little bit longer contract.
And I only have one second question, and this is in section 3.5, so page 23. When we're talking about immediate family members, those that are not subject to the employees that are related to the library trustees and the director and assistant director. But, we still have a lot of people in this one paragraph, but I didn't see son or daughter. Unless?
Child?
Oh, yeah, child, child.
Okay, okay, sad, sad. Okay, got it. Maybe I just looked at the beginning. Okay, thank you.
Ward.
Yes, Ward.
Where are you looking at?
Page 23, the last paragraph of section 3.5, but I missed, I think we lost it.
That's, it's quite a...
You know, I think I got about that far.
That's...
Besides, I was going to rely on the lawyers.
The lawyers.
Yeah. It's better.
I know.
We covered everything.
I was going to ask that. I guess it's rhetorical. We haven't had any major issues with the existing personnel policies, to your knowledge, over the past few years that you have not addressed.
Yes, yes. This is covering all the bases that have, that we have had come up since I've gotten here, as well as some of the things that, like, Management Association of Illinois has been recommending and that are common practice to address in policy sections.
Okay, so we're not going to take action now, just to make sure.
So, just if you have any further questions, if you're, you know, using it for bedtime reading and it's putting you to sleep, and you come up with a question, feel free to ask, comments, anything you notice, if something looks out of place, just comment.
All right, thank you. We're now on to agenda item number nine, the 2019 HVAC boilers and controls project release to bid. We have a percentage of...
Well, it depends on how you want to do this. We do have Bob St. Mary from Alara Engineering here with us. You have his wonderful information here in the packets. As you can see, we have all of our dates. We are hitting our dates just as expected and looking forward to getting this project underway. Bob, do you have anything you want to call?
Sure. Well, to talk about each individual one, as far as the HVAC two rooftops, we have a 70-ton and 90-ton train and telepack that exists on the roof today. We're looking at a direct replacement of those two units, going back to train with an telepack type unit. We've determined that the curbs will be able to be reused and that the connection points of the supply and return will line up to the existing, so it should be a reasonably straightforward remove and replace. So, we've worked with them. We have budget pricing from them for those units. So, as part of the bid package, the intent is, because we, it's best suited to sole source train because you have train and we're doing a direct replacement. If you went to Carrier or you went to Aon or you went to some other manufacturer, what would be required would be an adapter curve. You'd have to set the curve on top of the existing curve, adapt to the size of the new unit, and go from there, okay? So, that would raise the height of the unit up considerably. It'd increase the cost a lot. So, what we're trying to do is, well, the simplest task is, is you have train, let's replace the train. But, what we want to do in the bid form is we want to expose their price. So, what we're going to do, the reason that we get budget pricing, then in the bid form, we will list, you know, list out the cost of the HVAC equipment for the rooftops. If it lines up or within 5% one way or another of the numbers that we've received, we know we've received a fair price. If for some reason it's inflated, then we can call that out and we can see that. So, that's one of the reasons that we do that. As far as the control project, again, you have train. It's not a replacement of controls, it's an upgrade of controls. So, the intent is, is that you have now, I don't know what year it is, 2003, 1998. It's an old train tracer system, which was their original version of direct digital controls. They now go to, you know, you're just going to move up from 2003 technology to 2018 technology is what I'm telling you. So, the graphics will be improved, the speed will be improved, it'll be web-based. So, now you'll be able to access it from any computer, remote, any place you want to be. It's hot home, cell phone.
Cell phone.
You'll, you'll get alarms through that. The graphics will obviously be updated from that. So, that's the intent. The end devices, VAV controllers, thermostats, all those will remain. So, we're upgrading the front end of those control systems for that to happen. Again, we will define their price on the bid form as a line item. That way, we can compare it to the numbers that we were given as budget, just to make sure that we're within line of the price that we're supposed to receive. As far as the boilers are concerned, we're following the track of the original report pretty close on that. We're, you have lock-and-bar boilers now. We're going back to lock-and-bar as the base, but we will provide additional manufacturers so we can give competitive pricing on those. We're going to go to condensing boilers, which means that your boiler flue will really be no longer needed in that building. What we'll do is we'll discharge the boiler now, the new boilers and the combustion air directly out the sidewall, where the louver is now when you go out to the side of the building. Condensing boilers, the advantage of a condensing boiler is when you can produce a high delta T or a high temperature difference between leaving and discharge of the water, you can increase your efficiency of your boiler up to 96, 97 percent. So, you're using every bit of flue gas that you can to be able to conserve energy. The boilers you have today may be 80 or 85 percent efficiency, so you're going to increase quite a bit. Now, you may not get that fully when you're in the dead of winter and need 180-degree water. If we were designing this building brand-new, we designed it at 140-degree water with a high delta, so it would condense you around. But, you have boilers that, equipment that needs that hot of water, so we need to be able to produce that in the wintertime. We're replacing the pumps, we're replacing just about all the piping within the boiler room, expansion tanks, just, the whole room is essentially being replaced mechanically. So, you get all new for that. We're still playing around with that budget a little bit. We had 180 or some thousand dollars to be able to do that. We still think that we're in that range, but we're gathering piping or pricing from the pumps, and I'm also working with the contractor just to help me to budget some of the pricing installs. So, we feel confident with that. So, those are the three aspects of the project itself. I have sent Julie an email, I think it was this week, and I just outlined the fact that our out-to-bid date will be November 13th or 14th, somewhere around in there. So, we have about three weeks, a little over three weeks left. Our pre-bid meeting will be the 21st, our bid opening will be the 4th of December. The recommendation to the library board will be December 6th. That gives me a couple of days to do scope reviews before it has to get into your board packet. And then that gives the contractor 20 to 21 days of bidding time, so that's more than sufficient for a project this size. That's it. That's where we're at.
Thank you.
Can I put on the curb?
I'm sorry?
I don't know what a curb is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, quickly just...
I tried to do everything and it really laments terms, but sometimes I get carried away on that stuff. So, the roof, the unit itself doesn't just sit on the roof. There's an actual parapet that's raised up that it sits on.
So, now we'll put one on top.
And then that unit sits on top of that. The purpose of that is snow load and everything else. Get the unit up, you need the lift on the unit to be able to drain the curtain coil. So, that's the reason that you lift it up. Ideally, we want to reuse that curb, right? Because structurally, it's been supported, it's framed out, it's all done. So, no matter which way we go, we're using that curb. The ideal scenario is that the exact same replacement of equipment is exactly the same unit. That's the intent. But, we will add alternates or deductive alternates for other manufacturers. If for some reason Aon or Carrier or some other manufacturer feels they can do it less expensive, we'll give them the opportunity to bid the project, but not as part of the base bid. It will be an alternate bid within the bid form. So, we'll give you a lot of options.
Is that curb or pad or whatever, is that a solid thing?
It is. Well, it's solid, it's...
Do we have the roof under it?
It's solid with, if you took the rooftop off, you'd look right down into your building, okay? It had two locations where the supply and the return was. But, the curb itself is rectangular, it's, it's open at the top, and it's usually 14 to 18 inches high. It has a can strip, so water will flow off it and then it's flashed into your roof.
But, we don't roof under it? I mean, it's...
Nope, you don't roof under it. You roof up to it and into it.
Up to it.
Yep.
And I'm always a little gun-shy about major work on an existing roof.
Well...
We have appropriate safeguards to make sure we don't have to...
Yeah, the difference in weight between the two units is about 250 pounds. That's me standing at the end, so I'm not overly worried about the structural concerns of that. That's another reason to stay with the existing manufacturers, the structural concerns of the roof. But, this, this matches up really well. You know, intel packs have been around for a long time, and it's just the Kleenex name of transversion of this type of air handler. It's been around for a long time, obviously, since the original was put in here. I've put in a lot of them, and, you know, they're solid-built, last good 25 years or so. You know, when you talk about rooftop equipment, that's pretty good lifespan, you know, when you figure it's out in the weather for that many years. So, the nice part about it, they still make it. It's very popular, a lot of replacement units coming through now, so they've always maintained to try to keep the same physical footprint for that exact reason.
And generally, as far as the roofing itself, the work for this will take place in the area where they're already walking to do the service. It's, the roof itself is designed.
And there are walkways.
Yes.
Yeah, there is, exactly. There's walkways between the two. You know, so our drawings will define the location where they can stage a crane, because it's going to be a big crane with a big boom. You know, you're lifting a lot of weight off that roof, and then you're putting a lot of weight on. So, we'll coordinate that. You know, I will get with Ian in the next week or two and discuss a construction timeline. But, ideally, as looking at this construction happening sometime, certainly the boilers can't happen until May 15th, right? That's usually the magical date when you switch from heating to cooling. So, we have to wait until that time before we take the boilers offline. The rooftops are really dependent on deliverables. So, if you award this in December, say, truthfully, after summits and everything, it's awarded or summits are approved and the order is given to train on January 1st, those units are probably 14 weeks out, you know, for construction period. So, right then and there, you're looking at, you know, three-plus months. So, January, February, March, so it's April before the unit's even available to come. So, we'll coordinate that with the contractor. But, I was thinking, the ideal time for that to happen is really the swing months, which is, you know, really May, because you haven't hit the 90s yet, but you're not 20 either, you know? So, if there's, you know, it's, it's the early October, late September, and late April, early May timeframe that's ideal for rooftop replacements, just because of the conditions of the ambient air. You know, it falls within a category of 70 degrees outside, so, you know, you have some ability to open windows if you can, or, you know, open the doors and let the fresh air flow through, because you will be down for a day or two. You know, you will not have air conditioning. Not having boiler after May 15th, that's not a big deal. But, we would look at that portion of the project, the boiler side, probably lasting eight weeks, I would say, so it'll take you through. But, there, you don't have a major concern, because, you know, until you hit October 15th, just want to make sure you got, you got, you got water by that point. I don't think you reheat in the summertime, right? You do not reheat this?
No.
Do you reheat in the summertime?
Yeah.
Well, there you have it. So, we'll do it as quick as human possible.
The problem, of course, is that everybody is trying to install rooftop units and new boilers during those windows.
Well, yeah.
And we have a place in line pretty good.
Yeah, well, bidding it this early, you absolutely do, you know? So, you're getting in line with the school districts that are out there that are doing the exact same thing. You know, it's, I've been doing this for a long, long time, and I do a lot of K-12 work. And the one thing that's always been relatively consistent with them was bid the jobs in January, February, and then go. And all these districts now feel that they'll get better pricing and things like that if they move it up. And I'm sure if the pricing is... And I'm sure if the pricing is better, but you'll certainly get more interest because contractors are looking to fill up their summer. So I'm seeing not only school districts and yourself asking to get that timeframe moved up. So instead of being in the first part of two thousand and nineteen, now you're going to be in the late part of twenty eighteen. And in reality, by the time you award this, you are almost six months before you're even going to start construction. I mean, you're not going to start construction until probably May first. So, you know, you've got a long lead time in there to be able to, first of all, bidding it early will give you, I think, more contractors than you may get if you waited till March, okay? I'll assure that you get plenty of contractors, that's not going to be a problem. But as far as deliverables, the rooftops and the boilers and the pumps, the rooftop will have the longest lead time. And even with that, they'll probably be ready by April first at the latest. So I don't see any problem with timelines. Absolutely.
The control system.
Yes.
You're just doing the controller itself, the central?
Yeah, it's the front end, yeah.
The front end, you're just essentially a new computer and software.
Yeah, the end devices themselves, nothing wrong with them. I mean, it, it doesn't matter if it's train or jacks and controls or if it's Delta or if it's Honeywell or whoever it is. They all use very similar end devices, you know, water, temperature sensors and things like, you got to figure the rooftops are all going to be new. The only thing that really is going to remain is going to be the VAB controllers. Because the boilers are brand-new, the pumps are brand-new, the rooftops are brand-new, the only thing left is the VAB controllers. So outside of that, that's, that's, you're pretty much getting a whole new control system. Just because of the other jobs are going to fill in the gap of controls associated with what train will do on the front end of replacement.
Thank you.
I would, I'd like to add too, the reason why we're, we would like to do the, the automation system upgrade is because as of right now, train has topped out. This, the version that they put out almost six months ago is it and they are abandoning Summit, which is the version that we've got now. So there's, at this point, there's no more troubleshooting it or anything like that if it goes, it goes, we're done.
And, and just look at it in your own computer, right? I mean, none of you have a two thousand and three computer anymore, do you?
Does it run to us?
So it's, it's the same mentality, you know, it's, it's just, it's going to be much user, more user-friendly, I guess would be the best.
Better control, tighter, tighter control.
Exactly, there's a lot of advantages to the technology.
I can pretty, with this, I can pretty much get an alarm on my cell phone and be anywhere in the U.S. and be able to troubleshoot it and get it back online.
Yeah, there's a lot of advantages to that.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the release to bid for the twenty nineteen HVAC boilers and controls project?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded to bid twenty nineteen HVAC boilers and controls project. I'll just do a, let's just do a little call on this one.
Trustee Brown, yes, trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson, yes, trustee Quin.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the release to bid. We're now on to agenda item number ten. Library record.
Chris Adorey was officially appointed to the library board, unfortunately, due to, in October. Unfortunately, due to some commitments that she had made prior to learning that she would be appointed. She is unable to attend tonight or our November meeting, so her oath of office will actually take place in December. She and I are scheduled to meet for a brief orientation on number seven. So she's moving forward and similarly farewell to Ed Earl, who resigned his position as a library trustee. Ed gave some great service to the library, but that leaves an unexpired term. And so we are expecting someone to be appointed to that unexpired term at the village council meeting that will be held on November the.
Just a day before.
Which is the day before our meeting. We are working on making sure that we have contact information and are able to reach out. And if that individual is able to, to attend the meeting the following day, they will be sworn in the following day.
Was that a two or a three-year term?
That one is till twenty twenty, yes.
A little, a little longer.
Under two years, yes.
Is there, you know, the one thing I was thinking most about is what is the number that's required at forum?
You're looking at it.
Okay, okay. So we all have our year names, right?
Yes, yes. So please.
Just a case of, okay. But we, we, we could swear in a number.
Yes, and then, then because they were appointed already, even though they, swearing in is actually a technicality. It is their appointment by the village council, that is the actual beginning of their term. So they, that individual or Chrisa would count toward forum if they showed up.
Yeah, if they did. So theoretically, if any person was here at the next meeting and one of us got a home membership, it still, is that not true?
Yes, yes. And our twenty eighteen construction project begins on November fifth. It will be interesting, we will be, we're working next week through getting ourselves prepared. We have to do things like cleaning out the entire staff lounge and, and of course, right in the midst of all of this, we have much of the replacement furniture that we had ordered months and months ago. It's now showing up, so we're have, we'll have other furniture that we're selling, so it's going to be quite the time for the next few weeks. Once things get going, it should be better.
Are you going to coordinate the sale of furniture or the sale of books?
Actually, there, it will be right, right after, we will have all sorts of chairs.
Free chair, buy book.
Free chair with a bag of books. So hopefully, so if, if folks are looking for some used furniture, there will be some coming available. And also, I just wanted to call to your attention our September circulation statistics. Because there's been some talk in library land recently about lowering circulation among libraries. Between September of twenty seventeen to September of twenty eighteen, we circulated sixteen thousand more items in September of this year than we did last year. And that was after the, the implementation of automatic renewals. So that actually happened in June of last year. So this is apples to apples comparison and that is an incredible jump. And we were up in all areas, so. Chaos?
Thank you to the staff for that and obviously the staff is working hard to generate all that circulation and processes. All right, a read here to agenda item number eleven, trustee comments or requests for information?
Yeah, just one comment, I, I think I mentioned it once before and it gets a hungry way, but with the construction that we're doing the rest of this year. I mentioned that it would be nice if we had some little displays or informational signage or something to let our customers know what's going on. Even if it's back in the workroom, just let them know that the reason it's kind of noisy, especially is we're redoing the workroom. Give some great pictures or something, but not a lot of work, but just, just information and stuff with.
PR is on.
Transparency.
They are on it, they are doing signage for each of the areas that will be under construction. And so we're looking forward to what Chris and Melie put together for us, so, yes.
Next year, we can explain to the customers what a VAV box is.
Yep.
It could happen. There is also an article about this, of course, in the discoveries that will be arriving in homes next week.
Any other trustee comments or requests for information? All right, we are finished with the agenda and I will return the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.